All right, at 6:00 PM, Tuesday, July 8th, we'll call the Mount Pleasant Planning Commission Meeting to order. We'll have Ms. Graham do the pledge and Ms. Johnston do the invocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the nation under God, indivisible, in the name of God, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Should we pray? Almighty God, we thank you for this time for us to come together to discuss future plans for this town, our town of Mount Pleasant. We ask you for wisdom, discernment, and grace in that we would do our best to make the right decision this evening and beyond. Father, we seek you your will and we ask you to bless this time together. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, we do have a quorum. Everybody's here tonight. Approval correction of minutes from 6:10. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. No unfinished business for previous meetings, no reports from city manager. Let's move to new business.
New business. Applicant John Mayor Builders has submitted an application on behalf of owner Spencer M. Armstrong, Adeline A. Passor, and Dana McLendon for annexation of three parcels consisting of approximately 106 acres. The applicant requests the property be zoned R3, high-density residential for future single-family development. The property is further identified on Tax Map 111, parcel 29.00, reported in Book 1983, pages 804 through 805. Tax Map 111, parcel 29.05, recorded in Book 1358, pages 833 through 836, and Tax Map 11, parcel 29.6, recorded in Book 2734, pages 1,072 through 1,074. And the applicants are in auditorium.
If they'd like to speak, I'd like to start with them first. If we can. Or Cory, you want to explain the purpose of our meeting tonight?
Yeah, please. The applicant, John Mayor Builders, with the consent of the property owner, submitted an application for annexation of approximately 106 acres located off of Trotwood and Old Zion Road. This is a proposed annexation by owner consent. This is not initiated by Mount Pleasant. Annexations add property to the city zoning map in state law and the city zoning ordinance mandate that a zoning classification of the annexed property must be established simultaneously with the effective date of annexation. These are both zoning amendments that must be considered by the planning commission. Additionally, state law mandates that the planning commission must consider a plan of services for any proposed annexation. Tonight, the planning commission will consider providing a recommendation to the city commission on the following items: annexation of the proposed properties into the city limits of Mount Pleasant, a plan of services to provide city services to the property if annexed, and the zoning classification of the annexed property. On each item, the planning commission will make a recommendation to the city commission. The city commission will make the final decision. So tonight, we'll have a public hearing on all three of those items together at the same time. My recommendation is that the public hearing be opened and closed before you hear from, before you deliberate. So if you'd like to hear from the applicant first and then public hearing, we need to have a set time of when the public hearing happens. This commission can also set rules for the public hearing. The rules that we've used before I've outlined here, and I can read to you. I would ask that you adopt these or something similar because of the NASA tenant tonight. So, the previous rules we've used are each member of the public who has signed up to speak will have three minutes to talk. If you would like to nominate a representative to speak, the planning commission will allow the representative to have up to 10 minutes to talk. Persons are not allowed to speak more than once. The planning commission will not rebut public input, but will take the public's comments into consideration when making its recommendations to the city commission. And the public will speak first, then the public hearing will be closed, and then the planning commission will begin public deliberations. Just as a reminder to everyone, public hearings are not interactive. They speak to you, and you listen, and then you get to speak without their interruption. So I think Michael Haywood has these rules that he could put on the screen if that's something you want to consider for voting.
Yes, I think we ought to do that first. And I think it has to pass by two-thirds majority for those rules to take effect. So we'll do a roll call vote on that, on the rules of order.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm fortunate about it.
Any other questions for me?
I think that's it at the moment.
For now.
For now. I think I'd like, as we always do, I'd like to start with the developer first, move to our engineering firm, and then open it up for public comment.
Okay.
If they'd like to speak.
Good evening, Chairman. Rob Molson, SCC, on behalf of John Mayor Builders. Jack Mayor is here tonight in representation from the company's standpoint. We're requesting annexation of these properties tonight to the city on that side and accompanying that with the R3 high residential zoning on that side. You've been given a pack, I believe, by planning department on that side, includes a bunch of different documentations. Of course, it has our HD report in regards to hydrologic features in the property that have been evaluated and concurred by the state and the Army Corps of Engineers. You also have a traffic study that will provide, done by a third-party traffic engineer in regards to improvements that are required by this project with this on the property on that side. You also have a concept plan, which is more or less our initial look at how we plan to develop the property. There's also part of this project is a step system, which would be our sanitary sewer system, which is more or less a large unified septic system for the whole development on that side. I can definitely get into more elaboration on that if you'd like on that side. But we're just simply requesting the annexation for that concept on that side.
Can I step in real quick? So, they did submit a concept plan. That's not being considered by this for tonight. So the only thing that y'all are considering is the annexation, generally the plan of services, which would, in a way, include the step system because the city would not be providing public sewer, and then the zoning. So, as you know, you've heard it 100 times, when you accept a zone, you accept anything that can be built in that zone, not the concept plan that's been proposed. Sorry.
We'll probably have more questions for you after we do the public comment. That'll be fine, too, right?
Yes.
Question answered. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
That microphone really is just for the recording, right?
Just for the recording.
Sorry.
I don't know if Michael's here.
No, it works.
It's all the way up? Okay. All right. Will? Will with KCI?
I guess the applicant explained they are requesting on behalf of their client developer and the property owners to be annexed into the city limits and requesting the high-density residential R3 zoning. When we received the application, we compared it to the Murray County Comp Plan and the zoning ordinance to see how that conforms with the request. And what we found was that the Murray County Comp Plan Comprehensive Plan calls for this area along Trotwood Avenue to maintain a rural character where agricultural uses are encouraged and enhanced. That doesn't prohibit residential development of some sort, but it's somewhat limited. So please keep that in mind. The high-density residential zoning, or R3, is described in your zoning ordinance as a district that includes many types of residential dwellings that are organized in a cohesive manner. The district uses BIL-2 lines instead of traditional setbacks to establish a unified appearance and a more urban feel. Also, developments in R3 zones are intended to have a high degree of connectivity. Alley's are used instead of traditional driveways, and they should be located adjacent to downtown commercial activity to energize that local business, those local businesses and sidewalks along those areas. So that was the intent, as stated in the zoning ordinance. The Murray County Comprehensive Plan envisioned this area of Trotwood Avenue as maintaining a rural character. So, just wanted to share that for feedback. The applicant also mentioned the step system that's intended to be used. That is because sanitary sewer from Mount Pleasant is unfeasible to extend to this location at the moment. It's Edge Wastewater is the company that is proposing to service that if they proceed with the sketch development that they have developed so far. And I'm glad that they can speak to that. It is a technology that's used in many places, but I'm not prepared to speak to this specific vendor or their approach there. And so, they've also submitted a preliminary traffic impact assessment based on their proposed layout. Again, that's not being considered, and we will take a closer look at that study if it moves forward to a preliminary plat. It's probably the best time for us to have more feedback there. So, in summary, the planning commission is being asked to make a recommendation to the city commission for their final actions. You can make a recommendation to approve the annexation, the plan of services, and the zoning, or you can make a recommendation not to approve those items. Or you can also defer it and request additional information or for the applicant to reconsider a piece of their application as well.
So no modifications? It's up, down, or defer?
Well, you can ask them to modify their request.
That would be a deferral, man, right?
It would be essentially a deferral, but it would save them the application fee potentially and things like that. So, so things to consider. Again, this is similar to a rezoning request. It's a map amendment to your ordinance. And things you would like to consider is the amendment in agreement with the land use plan for the area. There, will there be any adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by overwhelming public benefit? Will any single property owner or small group of property owners benefit materially from this change to the detriment of the general public? And will have conditions affecting this area changed significantly enough to warrant this zoning amendment and zoning of the property at this point? And the last sentence is just to, it is helpful to state how this application meets or falls short. Cory has included a checklist in your packet as well for your meeting. But happy to answer any additional questions.
Do you all have any questions before we open up for the public portion of the meeting? We can always come back to this if we have new questions. All right, let's open it up to the public portion of the meeting. First citizen signedups, Mr. Jeff Brewer. Like to come up and say your name, address?
Thank you. I appreciate being given this opportunity. My name is Jeff Brewer. I live in Williamsport, and I'm a contractor of Historic Trades. That's a little bit of background on me, and I will be brief. I know there's a lot of people that want to speak. When I first learned about this meeting, I noticed on Facebook that your letterhead says, "Experience our history and explore our possibilities." And it's the history that I want to speak to. I've seen a lot of comments about the rural landscape and the farms and all of that. And I just want to speak just a brief moment about the history of it, because I believe if you zone that high-density residential, you're going to lose, you're going to destroy one of the most significant, historically significant pieces of property in Murray County. And I'm just going to be really brief and just read this one comment here, this one report by Colonel Stone, who was on General George Thomas's staff in the Civil War. And he said, "The situation," this is quote, "the situation at Pulaski was anything but cheering. Thomas directed Schofield to fall back with two divisions to Columbia on the 22nd. On the 23rd, the other two divisions understandably were to follow. It was not a moment too soon. On the morning of the 24th, General Cox, who had pushed within nine miles of Columbia, was aroused by sounds of conflict away to the west." What he's talking about is that field that's right across from St. John's, that area. That's where he heard the conflict, and he began pushing his troops rapidly to the west. And what was going on in that field, taking a crossroad, that's Old Sunnyside, leading south of Columbia, he reached Mount Pleasant Pike just in time to interpose his infantry between Forest Cavalry and a hapless brigade under the command of Colonel Capron, which was being most unceremoniously handled. It says here, "In another hour, Forrest would have been in possession of the crossing of the Duck River, and the only line of communication with Nashville would have been in the hands of the enemy." The reason I point that out is because there was no grand battle. There was no Gettysburg. There was no Shiloh. But that is, there was a running battle from just the side of Waynesboro all the way to Columbia. The reason I point that out is because in that field that we're talking about developing with high-density population, residential building, men fought in that field, they bled in that field, they died in that field. And we opened up, and I got to be really brief. There's a lot more I could say, but I know we've only got three minutes. But I want to point this out. In my opinion, we've lost enough American history since 2019. We opened up with the pledge of allegiance, "One nation under God," and then we had an opening prayer. And so, America, we know what our heritage is. We know what our history is. We at least say that we're a Christian nation. And I want to point that out because there is no Hebrew word for grandfather. And if you look back in the Bible, you always see the kings that followed David. They were buried with their fathers. They were buried with their fathers. The point is, those men that fought in that field, those were our fathers. The women who nursed them back were our mothers, and the children that were behind.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
S. Roland? S. Roland?
She's good.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Moore? Jennifer Moore?
No, I saw.
Well, it's a mic.
Paper we found.
Only if you want to. I mean, you got three minutes.
I don't know if I can talk for three minutes, but I grew up on Zion Road, and I don't think that it should be allowed because, as Mr. what's-his-name said, it's historical and there's so much that happened there, and we've lost so much in Columbia already. When we were on our way here, we took the back roads, and there's tons of land on the back roads that somebody could build something like that. Nobody else would have to be around it, and it wouldn't mess up the authenticity of the land and make everybody uncomfortable and upset. I would just ask that you say no. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Ms. Moore. 10 more? Did you sign up, Ix, in the table?
Well, thank you. Well, we're already having trouble with water. What we gonna do with water? What about all the traffic already down? We could not get out of Zion Road when we was coming down here this afternoon. We was going to get a red light in there. We work wrecks there every day. It's just, you know, it's really congestive. That's about all I can think of right now.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Moore. Lily Reagan?
My name's Lily. I have been a resident of this area for my entire life. I mean, we moved up here when I was just maybe two or three years old. I've always had planned to stay here, to live here, to be able to be on my parents' property and grow my family here. This is a place we all love. I'm sure every single person behind me can say they love the place they live. This will make us hate the place we live. Cramming these houses into historical, as we heard before, a historical area is just going to make everybody's life harder. As we have already heard, we have issues with our water already. We have issues with power already. This is between two historical churches on farmland that cannot even support its own sewage. It's reckless and shortsighted. We're talking about installing a 26-acre sewage lot along Trotwood Avenue near wetlands and natural streams. It's not development. That's degradation of our environment. Our roads are not built for this. Our schools are not prepared. I went to Mount Pleasant High School, been graduated for six, seven years. They weren't prepared then, let alone now, bringing this many people in. Our community, our emergency services, I got into a wreck a couple months ago. It took them 45 minutes to get there. And you think that's going to change with bringing all these people in? Our community are made up of people who care deeply about this land, and we all feel that we're being ignored in favor of fast development and private profit. Because at the end of the day, that's what this all about. It's about money. This isn't about being against growth. It's about being, it's about responsible planning that respects the land, the people, and the long-term health of this area. Don't trade our rural heritage in our environmental safety for this development. There are many places that we could do this. Throwing this somewhere where it's farmland, I saw that we lose acres of farmland every single day in this community. We cannot keep doing that. We cannot keep giving up our heritage, our what we grew up on, and just become the next spring hill that it takes 30 minutes to get one mile. I very much hope that you take all the people who showed up today, the people who were in the hallways who could not get in here, the people who shared this on Facebook, and take their opinions into the matters. I know you guys are not here to say which way if we're going to develop this land. If not, I know that's not your job. But this is the first step to doing so, and I hope that you, everybody here, knows the drastic effect that this is going to have on our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. James Reagan?
I live at 2676 Zion Roads, directly across the street from this. Our road, on average, has 75 18-wheelers come down right now, which is ridiculous to begin with, but we're talking about cramming 500 more cars in one little corner. If you go, I used to be able to leave my house, get to Columbia in five minutes. You go right now at 4:30, it's going to take you 25 minutes. We already know there's 900 houses coming ahead of this, and nobody has a clue how to fix that, because you can't widen Trotwood. That's it. It's all you got, two lanes. Now we're talking about putting 250 houses in a 100-by-100 lot. Can't have septic tanks because they're not big enough lots. So we're going to make the sewer over here that, and we hope it works. We don't know if it will. We hope it does. Guarantee it's going to break down at some point. That's a given on any plumbing. It's going to break down at some point. Think about, like my daughter said, the schools. All these people have got to go to school somewhere. They're all family homes. What are we going to do about that? You got to do the infrastructure before you give them permission to build a house. I had to do it. When I built my house, I had to come here, I had to pay for, I had to go through everything. And if I didn't perk, guess what? They weren't letting me build that. These are all things you got to think about before you let them build houses. All they care about is money. That's it. We all know this. We're going to build the crappiest houses we can and get out. I know it says 247, but if you have listened, he said, "Well, we might better modify that after we get approved." So what does that mean? What does modify mean? We're going to go 300 houses? We'll sneak in a couple? Going to do it all duplexes? All fourplexes? These are all questions that, like he said, like you said, it can be modified after it's approved. Now, where does that, how does that even work? You can modify something after you approve it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cheryl Thornton? You're good? Uh, Jerry Thornton?
I live at 6409 Trotwood. That's pretty much just right across the road from where the step sewer system's going. I don't know a lot about it, but 74,000 gallons of water per hour to operate that, I think. I'm sorry, per day. Not only that, but the traffic. I got a little sheet here that says that, you know, the traffic between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock, Trotwood Avenue sees about 1,000 cars there. Takes me about 5, 10 minutes to get out of my driveway, no matter which way I turn. Where's traffic going? Some main concern to me is traffic. If there's an emergency, we have to go to hospital or something, or just, it's just uncontrollable, I think. So many cars, which, you know, we can't control that, but we can't control the houses that they build, I think. And we already have water issues. We just need to slow down a little bit. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you.
I got a Mike Williams next on the list.
I'm Mike Williams. I live off of Pope. And at times, my water pressure is only 10 pounds. You put 250 homes, I'm going to have less than three pounds at these certain times. You can't do nothing with that. Not only that, at times, it takes me 15 minutes for me to get off a pump onto Trotwood. You add 500 more cars to that, and it's going to take me 30 minutes or 45 minutes to get out there. Not only that, my power goes off quite often. You add more, 250 more homes, it's going to go off even more. Not only that, but you're going to have more kids. We don't have enough room for in school now. We're going to have more kids driving on this roads, which it's hard enough to drive Trotwood now. We're going to have more accidents. We have enough accidents on the corner of Zion and Trotwood now, and Pope and Trotwood now. You add all these more, it's going to be even worse. We don't have the infrastructure. There is no way at this point in time that even if you did do half of this, we would have even enough infrastructure. So say no to it. I mean, I'm all for progress if it's done the right way, but this ain't going to be the right way. It's going to make my life even more miserable. It's miserable now, and I love where I live. Please don't make me move.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I got a Ruth and a Bobby McIver signed up. Both of you want to speak or one of you?
I didn't really make any prepared comments.
Just want to say you've been here?
I'm here. You know, I'm a...
Address, please, sir.
I'm 2402 Hampshire Pike.
All right, thank you.
Part of the Zion community. My third great-grandfather was one of the 11 families that settled Zion. And the people that own this land are my relatives, and, you know, thank a lot of them and everything. I just think that R3 development, you know, I'm going to sit on it a while and see if you can get R2 or R1. Mount Pleasant is sort of a diamond interrupt. Jim Barry is a good friend of mine. And I know that he and Jim Bailey got city planners in here and got Mount Pleasant zoned, which Columbia never was zoned. That's part of the problem, why you have the battery plant out there in that great location and all these R3 developments out there. I just think Mount Pleasant's got a whole lot going for it, and this is, in the long run, I don't think this development is the best for the community. I don't think, that's all I got to say. I mean, I'm just, I'm opposed to it from the historical standpoint and from just the community, you know. You got, that's a good piece of property there. It doesn't have to be high-density residential. Somebody else would develop it a different way. Give them a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Got a Jim Harrison?
My name is Jim Rush Harrison. I live at 6419 Old Zion Road. My property's going to back up to the sewer treatment plant. And you can tell that I'm going to have concern about that. First, I want to say that I don't believe that the R3 falls within the master plan of Murray County Comprehensive Plan. I just don't think it fits. I'm one man in the idea, but I think I've got a few folks behind me that might just agree that R3 in this particular property is just not the right choice. I want to call it concern to the runoff, of the possibility of runoff of a step system. There's 40 acres behind my house. 26 of those, according to the reading, are going to be identified into the Trotwood, I think, Avenue Treatment Plant. If there is a high saturation that occurs in our environment, some kind of heavy rainfall, we've got trouble, friends. I'm also concerned about the surrounding properties, not only mine, but my neighbors'. We're few, and we love our place. I've been at my place for 20-plus years. So I'm kind of concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the traffic pattern, since I live on Old Zion Road getting onto Trotwood. I'm also concerned about the traffic pattern, since I live on Old Zion Road, getting onto Trotwood is just some kind of difficult. And if you've traveled that road, you've kind of experienced some of that. I know that the plan calls for two traffic lots, one at the intersection of Polk Lane, Zion, I get that. There's also another one that's scheduled to be implemented at Old Zion Extension. I understand that, but I also know that there is another development coming in around Ridley Park. Oh my, we've got trouble, friends. I'm concerned about that. Could it be possible that the Step system, could it be considered to be relocated elsewhere instead of on the property where it is? Put it on the backside of something else. Talk about adverse effects on neighbors, I think this is it. In a relocation, there are no neighbors that it could impact. I'm asking this planning commission to reconsider, maybe even deny the request of the landowners and the developer that's coming this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Tom Price?
Good evening, my name is Tom Price, I live at fifteen-ten Windermere Drive. Um, I'm also the archivist for Murray County, and that's the role that I'll speak to you tonight as. I expect it tonight, most everybody here would be talking about overdevelopment that leads to traffic and safety concerns and roads and water and sewer resources, schools and general overcrowding. I shouldn't have been surprised that a number of my fellow Murray Countyans were speaking about history. Uh, Murray Countyans know their history. Um, I'm going to speak from an historical perspective. The property in question is, from an historical perspective, Halib ground. It was the home of early Tennessee pioneers who sought their fortune from the land. It was the home of generations of enslaved African-Americans who toiled to make others wealthy. So successful were they in their endeavor, and in no small part because of the land in question today, that Murray County became the wealthiest county in the state of Tennessee by eighteen sixty, on the eve of the Civil War, a bid, as you've heard, of which was fought on the land you are considering tonight. In eighteen seventy-four, agriculture expert Joseph B. Kilibrue remarked, "From Columbia southwestward lies one of the most beautiful bodies of land in the United States. Certainly none other in Tennessee surpasses it, and no other is so well-known or often spoken of by travelers. This section extends over almost the entire territory embraced between the Little and Big Bigby Creeks and contains some of the handsomest and most productive farms in the state." That description still fits, one hundred fifty years later. Kilibrue concluded, "In Ashwood, the wealth of the county lies in the country." If you stand in the Tower of St. John's Episcopal Church and peer out of that ancient window at the scene before you, it's basically the same scene that Bishop Leonidas pokes on eighteen forty-two, when he consecrated the church. On the land about to be developed into some two hundred and fifty houses, once stood one of the finest houses ever built in Tennessee. Fire took Ashwood Hall in the eighteen seventies, but the land around it flourished long beyond it, and the kitchen barely still stands today. According to Richard Quinn's excellent history, Ashwood, The Pokes and the Pillows, Quinn, by the way, was the one who wrote the nomination for the National Register of Historic Places for the Ashwood District, of which this land is part of. He wrote, "Two hundred trees were set out, many native, others imported, and an English gardener was brought over to design and care for the lawns, gardens, greenhouses, and also two orchards, where espaliered French trees were, fruit trees rather, were trained in trellises and against the walls." The late nineteenth-century county historian Frank H. Smith wrote this about Ashwood's grounds: "The park and lawn extended for about a mile on the Mount Pleasant Pike and was stocked with rare animals. The front fences on both sides of the Pike were dressed cedar, about two by six inches, paneled into large cedar posts topped with an inverted acorn, all painted white."
Mr. Price, your three minutes is up, we thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Lee Burke? Lee Burke?
Well, I scribbled a few notes down, I'm gonna hit this so I can...
Get your address too, please, sir.
Yes, sir, sixty-seven fifty-eight Polk Lane, so that intersection is near and dear to my heart, and it is the straightaway. Um, I, I expect that you're gonna hear more tonight about bodily of life, historical significance, and those type of things. Um, but because of the work I used to do for a living, I know a lot of stuff is data-driven. Um, I'm focusing on the traffic study. I haven't given it a thorough look, haven't gone all the way through it, all details, but some things jumped out, uh, both in the, what I call, the Ridley Project, which is the larger seven hundred and sixty-five house project up the road or planned for there. In looking at the traffic study...
You're having your own time on its own.
Somebody else give me a, I'm gonna get there in one minute. Um, and, and looking at that study, I saw a couple flaws. And I'm seeing the same type of thing in the traffic study here, and I know the traffic up and down Trotwood is a major issue. And I really don't have a picture of how they're gonna improve Trotwood to accommodate that in the future. But it's already a mess in the afternoons, you guys know that, but here's some of the data is, back when they, they did the Rad Ridley Study, they based it primarily the, the growth part, I mean, they could do the traffic study looking at their project, but you lay that on a, on a background of what exists now and growth looking forward. They based it on a two percent per year. That was based on an MPO projection of population for Murray County and for Columbia. Actual growth for the, those years of twenty-two to twenty-four in Murray County was three percent, and Columbia was four percent. So all of the background projections used in that study for that seven hundred and sixty-five houses, six thousand cars a day, sixty-five hundred cars a day projected out of that project, is gonna be, is added into numbers that are underestimated. So they're, what they're looking at, and it kind of carries over to this project, I'll give you the couple of numbers. Uh, the, the base you use for your, your, your projections, if you go back too far in a community that's surging up, you miss the growth. So they started back in two thousand and fifteen, and for the two thousand and fifteen to twenty-four, they came up with a point five-seven annual growth rate. They, so that, that's part of their calculation. Um, the actual for twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, four years, more recent with the, the current growth curve, is three percent. So that's five times what they were, they were looking at. Uh, that's for Trotwood. For Zion Road, they're estimating two-point-two-nine percent, but if you go to a little shorter period, it's eight-point-four-three percent per year. So that's three, almost four times what they were using in their background study. So those are the kind of things that need to be looked at. Um, the traffic counts were taken in March, which is, the bridge was closed.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, three, three minutes goes pretty quick.
It sure does.
Thank you, sir.
Gonna say one more, just one thing, stoplights are not the answer.
Got a name I can't read, last name starts with a W, maybe?
Christina?
Christina?
WA?
WA?
Honestly, I didn't, I thought I was just signing in to let you know I was here, but with, I agree with what everybody else is saying.
Can, can you give us your name, maiden's?
I'm Christine White, I live at one ten Lake Side Drive, and I'm a military vet. When I first came home, the first accident I saw was a D O A motorcycle. The second accident I saw was a motorcycle where we had to use that field for lifeline. The third accident I saw was my child in twenty-twenty-four, and it took cops and EMS over forty-five minutes to get to my child. What saved her was a nurse coming home. We don't need no more traffic. My grandfather knew that land way years ago, and I feel we're gonna destroy it. We already have issues with our power and our water like others have said. And I think we need to fix what we got going on before we add two. You got seven hundred and fifty houses coming in, that's already in the ballpark of rolling. Let's get that fixed before we go adding to the problem. As well as, I work for Murray County Public Schools as well. Where are we gonna put these kids? School starts in less than three weeks. Where are you gonna put these new families? Where, I mean, Central got rebuilt and was maxed out before it was rebuilt. Mount Pleasant, my children went from Water to Mount Pleasant Middle to Mount Pleasant High, and my son out is on to Central. And those schools are so overran, getting to and from school is almost impossible for these kids. I have seen kids even on the bypass where people come off the exits and stuff, there is Zion Road on both sides. Get hit, flip, hydroplane. That farmland has significant historical value as well. I, from what I've seen, I think this is gonna destroy what we got, I think it's gonna cause more complications than what it's worth. And as far as putting these lights in, we've been begging for a light at Polk Lane and Trotwood since before I moved there over twenty years ago, and no one wants to pay for it, whether it's Mount Pleasant or the county, or they won't even go happy. So fix what's there, fix the problems now. I mean, just coming here tonight, I literally got hit by a transfer truck trying to cut in there to get to the bypass to get out. I mean, I don't understand why they're wanting to put so much in one spot, where like other people have said, there are hundreds of acres that are not directly on that path that would be far more suitable. And like the overflow and the wetlands and stuff, what are you gonna do? That land floods all the time, every time it rains, you have standing water.
Thank you, Ms. White, your three minutes, three minutes are up.
Thank you, sir, thanks.
Larry Gibson? You're good? Uh, William Cozy, Co- Cozy?
William, go by Bill.
And your, your last name's Cozy?
Cozy, that is correct. Sixteen thirty-six North Main, right up here in front of Hamilton House. You know, I'd heard everything about the historical, that was the Polk's, Polk, one of the Polk homes, that's good. Lot of history there. What's gonna happen to the artifacts when you start turning the ground? Infrastructure, everybody's talked about it, water, sewer, gas. Just consider the mail. We go, we've been going two or three days without mail. Mount Pleasant can't handle it, Columbia can't handle it. We're adding another two hundred and fifty houses here, and I already know the seven hundred houses has already been approved, right down Trotwood. Road improvements, yes, there's many accidents, Polk Lane, Zion Road Extension. You know, getting on the bypass is a problem. The only safe way to do it is right in front of the airport. You can't get on it, you may sit there five minutes, ten minutes, early in the morning. I go to work in Columbia every day. I leave the house at six-thirty to be work before eight o'clock. School, nine months out of the year, when school's in session, you can't make it from here to Columbia at eight o'clock. There's all the schools, the buses, everything else. Address changes. I get services from Columbia for water, I get electric here, I get gas here. You know, it's all confusing, I've got a Columbia address. I order something, I have to tell people to use Mount Pleasant zip code, find me on Google Maps. You know, straighten out some of the things we have. Not this commission, but a commission before this. Annex the area they have up to, Roses, the church, Polk Lane. They agreed, come around and talk to the people, ask us a fuel vote for the annexation, we'll provide you with sewer, we'll provide you with water, we'll provide you with city services. We got streetlights, but that's all. We don't have sewer, we don't have Mount Pleasant water. We do have electric and gas, but that's, the gas line was put in a long time ago. You know, it's just a lot of things that have been promised and a lot of changes need to be made. Entrances to the bypass, not the one at the airport, Zion Road, where you get on and go around, you have to cross two lanes of the highway before you even head back to Columbia. Zion Road Extension, you may sit there for a little while while you're waiting on, get out on it, on the road. Fix the problem we got now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cozy. Mr. Cozy was the last one that signed up, but since this is a public hearing, if anybody else would like to speak on this matter, we will listen to it now, Mr. Buckner?
William Buckner, live at sixteen fifty-two North Main. I wanna talk about the land. I farmed that land for eighteen years. The twenty-six acres that you're talking about putting the sanitation in, the upper corner be fine. But the lower part of that twenty-six acres is gonna get into, um...
Your time's up too.
The, the twenty-six acres is gonna get down into that wetland. If it don't, there's enough bedrock in that area, that land is close to rock. And I don't mean just a little of it, I'm gonna say ninety percent of that land within six feet you'll hit rock. The, the big portion on the back part of it has been mined, there's sinkholes back there. If they close them sinkholes off, that becomes a pond. I've seen six feet of water in that area. Cause you, you see the water on the other side of the four lane, and then when it goes down, that water goes down. The, the old Zion Road is built in from the, the curve out to Trotwood. That was built by Ms. Armstrong for a road for Clyde Thompson to haul silage across, so he wouldn't have to turn left across traffic. That road was never built, if you go look at it, there's probably still, I bet, the last time I saw it, there was still the steel pipes they bought off a stalker or somewhere and put in there for drain tubes. It was never dug out and reinforced, that's the reason it's falling apart. That road is gonna have to be rebuilt, if they're gonna use it. The land on each side of that road is nothing but swamps. I don't think the federal government let them build houses in there. Wetland, it's, it is considered wetland, I was gonna clean up some of it back during the early eighties, and the federal government stopped me from doing it. There is probably forty percent of that land, at some point in time, is a wet, well, it's spring running out of it. You don't wanna build a house on top of that. Now, I, I can't, I'm just telling you what the land is. And it's not ideally to build houses on. And I thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Burke. Anyone else?
My name is Dawson Gray, my address is thirty-one forty-three North Cross Bridges Road. I'm the pres, past president of the board at St. John's Church. Sorry, I didn't know I had to sign in to be able to speak, but I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. All of these people that are here talking are against this, and one of the main reasons is, in St. John's Church, we have one of the jewels in the state of Tennessee, if not the entire South. There are only three plantation churches left in the country, so one in Mississippi, one in Virginia. And we have the Polk Plantation Church here. And it is a thriving community with no congregation. It's mostly the St. Peter's community, but a bishop comes down, every, uh, witsendy, we just had the big witsendy service, had two hundred and seventy-five people there. Now, what, Mount Pleasant's gonna have to make a decision as to what you want here, because we have rattling snap, lifting place, Bethel Place, magnificent, uh, antebellum homes, and we have St. John's Church here. And I'm sorry, in eighteen seventy-four, Ashwood Hall burned. But I think Mr. Buckner is absolutely right on that property over there. I'm related to the Armstrongs too, and, but St. John's needs to have the rural character surrounding the entire area, or people are not going to come there. They will see two hundred and fifty houses, seven hundred and... They will see two hundred and fifty houses, seven hundred and sixty-five, did someone say? I thought it was seven forty-one. Maybe they added a few, that happens, doesn't it? So, I would appreciate your giving due consideration to the fact that Mount Pleasant has always considered St. John's. The wonderful church that it is, and I know you're proud of it. Let's do not destroy the beautiful sight. We're the antebellum capital of Tennessee. Let's keep it. Thank you.
Y'all, y'all, y'all gotta get a speak once. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Buckner. That, uh, that was, that was in the rules. That, uh, anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Robert Lacy, I live by twelve oh one Shackelford Drive. I've lived in Mount, not as long as some.
Stop. Okay, we can't be talking while he's talking.
I've lived here for twenty years now. My kids went to Mount Pleasant schools, my grandkids now are going to Mount Pleasant schools. And I know it's overcrowded. Because my family's there. I know Trotwood can't handle that traffic. Because we drive between Mount Pleasant and Columbia on a daily basis. You cannot, this isn't, you've already got seven hundred homes going in between Old Zion and the ballparks. Now you wanna add another two hundred and fifty. And for what? So this company can sell four hundred thousand dollar homes that nobody can afford? Because that's what they're going for. The Bear Springs development's going up, has a sign up starting in the low four hundreds. I don't know who four hundred thousand dollars is low to, cause it sure as heck ain't me. So who's gonna buy these houses? Besides the fact, water, electric, sewage, I live in the city limits and don't have sewers on our Shackelford. And was told, that was promised to be brought out there, but then once GM moved down here, all that got moved over to the other side of the highway to appease GM. I'm having to pump a septic tank two or three times every five years. And my land floods, this rain we've had this year, my land floods and my septic system backs up. Imagine what it's gonna be like on that property. And you're gonna tell me that the step system is never gonna overflow, never gonna go into that water system, never gonna destroy that stream. It's not gonna happen. It's gonna fail, it's gonna pollute the water, and then what? Then we gotta pay for somebody to come and clean all that up? And who's profiting from this annexation? Is Columbia getting paid so that they give up two hundred forty-seven homes of tax money? How's that work? I just, I get y'all wanna grow and get more people here, but there's better ways to do it than putting it at this location where the traffic cannot be handled. It can't be done. I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Buckner. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tom Nate Gordon, my address is thirteen oh nine Trotwood Avenue. Uh, my family owns the property that joins this development, I'm speaking on their behalf. Uh, I really can't add anything to what's been said, I came just to say that I agree with what's been said. Uh, I, I think it's an irresponsible development because it's too intense. I, I, I know development will come, and, and I think we need development, people want places to live. But I was reflecting all this, and there's a development as you go into Spring Hill, just south of Minneapolis. Very dense, there are townhouse development, that's what you're gonna have if you approve this. The houses may not touch each other, but it's gonna be a very, very intense development. I would ask you to consider what's been said, that it's gonna be too intense, you said that you didn't quite know how the sewer system or the septic system would work. So you've got something that may have proven to work somewhere else, but you don't necessarily know if it's gonna work here. The traffic issues, uh, there're gonna be people that will live there, I don't think they're gonna work at Mount Pleasant. They're gonna be probably driving to Columbia or going to the bypass so they could go to a job north of here. Uh, it, it's too soon, I mean, if you, if you wanted to annex property, why don't you annex Zion Acres? You've already annexed up to the borderline of Zion Acres, if you need to have more taxpayers, why don't you do that? I, I think you haven't provided with just a minimal amount of services, so I would, I would ask you to consider this and, uh, to decline it or at least to defer it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Gordon.
My name's Gerald Gabriel, I live on one one nine Ford South Ford Road. Thank you for the opportunity to talk, sorry, losing my voice a little bit. Coming at this from a little bit different angle. My wife and I bought that house last year. We moved here, uh, from Spring Hill. We lived in Spring Hill since twenty fourteen. We came from Colorado. Anybody that knows Colorado or knows Spring Hill knows the perspective I'm coming from and what we left. We had the opportunity to buy this home, a home that was built in the early nineties. A home on a couple of acres, a home that provides a space for ourselves and for our kids. We bought a home that, leading up to the Fourth of July, we didn't realize our neighbors were out lighting fireworks. And to quote my wife, it's because the last homes that we lived in were those cardboard homes in town. Those were those homes that are proposed for this section. This is a high-density, throw-together, very quick, cheap home, sold for way too much money. It is not something that everybody can afford, as has already been said. But my ask is that you consider the thoughtful growth, take a property like that, use the space that is manageable, and put maybe estate-style lots, one to two acre lots. If it's gotta get developed, we all understand, that's what brings people like myself to this community. To enjoy and love the community that we came here for. We didn't come here to stay in Spring Hill. We didn't come here to stay in areas that are overpopulated and high-density. We came here to get away with it, or to get away from it, rather. I ask that you would consider that.
Sheila? We need to get this moved out, cause we need to get to the finer the facts, so a couple more people, we'll just have to.
My name's Sheila Rogers, and I moved here from New Jersey six years ago. I lived in New Jersey for twenty-eight years, and when I moved there, it was like identical to Mount Pleasant. My taxes when I moved to New Jersey were about nine hundred dollars a year. And I urge you to be very careful, because the same thing happened in New Jersey is what's happening between Columbia and Spring Hill, and what I fear is going to happen here. Everybody says, we've got to build up, we've got to build up, it'll bring down your tax base, so it'll lower our taxes. Well, in that twenty-eight years, my taxes went from nine hundred and something dollars to ten thousand a year. It happened in the last ten years I was there. We had to build new schools, we had to get, uh, more, more police, more fire, more infrastructure. All the big box stores moved in, Target, Staples, Home Depot, everybody. Um, it ended up looking like Spring Hill and Columbia. Um, it was over eight hundred dollars a month for my taxes. When I moved here, it was like a raise. Just be very careful, it's a myth that it brings down your taxes. It raises your taxes, because as things move in, the infrastructure has to be paid for. So just please keep that in mind, it's a myth, okay? I lived it. Thank you.
He could, we'll finish up with you, I think we've, we've heard about all the different, nobody's brought anything really new in the last few. Yes, sir.
My name is Jason Fulmer, I live at seven thousand two Hoover Mason Lane. Uh, I'm from Arkansas originally, my wife's from Columbia, she brought me up here. Little less than a decade ago, I was born in a small town, raised in a small town, I love small town. I'm a land surveyor by trade, I do a lot of work around here. And too many times, I'll spend days to weeks walking through farms, deeds go back hundreds of years. I'll walk every square feet, walk through it, spend the time, look at the trees, see the buildings, see the waterways. Too many times, I turn around, just six months later, it's bulldozed, it's gone, it's flattened. And I know you can't stop progress, but you can be responsible about it. There's a lot of people behind me who've said more than I could ever say, who know this land better than I will ever know it, who know these families. So all I can do is just implore you just to take time. Think about what people that grew up here, what they need, what they want. Just be responsible with this land, cause there's not enough of it, it's changed too fast. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll close out the public portion of this, uh, if, if anybody would like to speak again, there'll be the second public hearing in August, August nineteenth. Right, for the second reading, what you said, I think it was August nineteenth.
That depends on.
Oh, depends on what happened there. Well, it, it really doesn't, they still have to go through both, right?
Unless it's a deferral.
Right, unless it's a deferral, okay. So what do we wanna move to now? We have our questions? You have questions? Who wants to start? Or do you wanna go through the plan of services first?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If you want, we can talk a little bit about annexation generally, before we go through that. So, um, as we talked about at the beginning, this is an annexation by owner consent. I think older law used to be where cities could just proactively annex properties. That's not what we're talking about right here. The only reason that you are considering annexing this property is because the owners and applicant builder submitted an application for annexation. And the rule of the law is that it has to be considered by this board. Anytime that you are considering an annexation, you have to look at a plan of services. That plan of services outlines all municipal services that would be provided to this property upon annexation. Um, I do think it would be helpful for y'all to go through that, each item by item, and have the different, uh, groups report on that if they needed to, but that's something that the city prepares to say, this, if we annex this property, here's how we would serve it. Here's the services that we get, what services it would not get from the city, here's the things that would be responsible, uh, the, the developer would be responsible to, or the city would be responsible to. Um, then the next thing is the zoning. The zoning also was requested by the applicant. It's not something that the city picked, okay? Y'all can agree, disagree, refer up or down, give comments to the developer, but what you can't do is annex it and pick a zone that they don't consent to, okay? So, that's something that I'm sure we'll be talking about at some point later on. Also, I know that a concept plan was submitted, that's not what's being considered. As y'all all know, and the public can hear, maybe for the first time, R three zoning is what they would be approving for the property. They would be considering whether or not R three is appropriate for that land. And then, once that happens, then the site plan, or not site plan, the, um,
Concept plan?
The preliminary plan would be something that would be submitted. At that point, they would have the restrictions and the freedom of R three zoning. At any time a preliminary plot is submitted, then that's when you can look at the specifics as far as, um, the step system, the traffic study, the, you know, where the roads are, the entrance, and all of that is part of the preliminary plan. So even though you have a concept plan, that's not what you're considering, okay? That, they're not tied to that, you're not tied to that, it's whether or not R three is appropriate for this property. Now, as far as the plan of services, like I said, there's a lot of, a lot is relevant to that plan of services, but I do think the best way to do this is to go through that. Um, we have separated out the decisions that y'all will make into two resolutions. If you want me to stop talking, then we can bring that back up when it's time for.
Well, I think maybe we oughta go through the, the plan of services first, and, and if we have questions on it. So I mean, the, the first plan of services is the police department, is Exhibit C. I don't know, does anybody have any questions up here on the, on what Chief Hay did, or his department did for us, in that plan?
Tomato?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, the person in Exhibit C, I had the police department, I know it's hard to look at it from a concept plan, but they are asking for the highest density, so we base that off of, like what Mr. Burke said, off of data and standards. So we base it off of the, um, two point seven per thousand, uh, for officers, uh, so even with that, if it is the highest density, yes, there is a cost of that, and it would, we would have provided an officer, uh, according to the standard, just pulling that out just for that concept plan, yes, but we can provide the services, but there is a cost of that.
Okay, yeah, I didn't really have any questions on that, I know there's too much of there. I, I do have a question on the fire service, which is the next one.
Yes, so y'all know that's near and dear to my heart.
Right, but I figured, yeah, I figured that'd be a close one for you.
Yeah, so we tried to make an agreement with, uh, City of Columbia several years ago. So even as, we talked about tonight, even the seven hundred plus home development, we responded that through automatic aid. And then the same thing with Columbia coming to, if this happens to that area, through automatic aid agreements.
My, my question was, it's, you know, the, the four-minute response time is a national standard, but everybody's gonna be five minutes from this subdivision, does that affect our insurance rate for the town?
So I put that, um, we had that in there because there's normal driving conditions, so emergency, uh, traffic would be different, but it's like everybody said, traffic does change. So, uh, but from Station Four, Food Line, and then at eleven fifty-eight North Main, the response time shouldn't be extended.
Okay, but that, that, okay, so if it meets the standards, it wouldn't affect the fire rating for the city, for insurance purposes, people that live there. Anybody else have any questions about the fire department? That's the only one I had. Uh, uh, Columbia Power and Water is gonna supply the water?
Yes, it's not, it's CD of Mount Pleasant's water, they do have an availability letter in there, so it's gonna be a pound of water now.
Anybody have any questions on that? Uh, Edge wastewater. A lot of questions on that. Do we have someone here who could speak on Edge wastewater?
Yes, sir.
Explain a step system to us.
A step system is more or less, as I said earlier, it's more or less a unified septic system for the development, but it is not a septic system. It is a completely enclosed system in regards to the sanitary system. So what happens is, every house does have a septic vault in the front yard. It has a, has a, uh, has a pump on it that pushes, pushes it through a force line that goes out to a sewer line that runs along the street. All those sewer lines go back to one unified system, which is more or less a collection system, that has a system of tanks where they agitate the water, like you see it at a sewer plant on that side. It then goes through a bioclear system, which is a chemical system which helps break down. So, again, all your solids stay in the tank in the front yard on that side. So Edge wastewater, or if there's another company that would take on management of the system, would have to come through periodically and empty the tanks via septic truck on that side and disposal through state regulations on that side. So the only thing that's going to the filtration plant for the step system is just the gray water itself, not solids on that side. So the water goes to the system of three tanks, the agitators and disenterers, so that gets to the bioclear system, which then breaks down anything through a chemical basis on that side. From there, it's then pumped into what we call the UV building. So inside there, we actually use UV light to finish breaking down any of the pollutants that are inside the water on that side. So, generally speaking, when you look at it from the standpoint of a septic system versus a step system, a septic system, when it comes out of your house, that water that's coming out of your tank and going into your drip lines in your backyard, is raw sewage. The water that comes out of the UV building on that side and goes out to our unified drip system on that side is relatively clean water. It's not pollutant-free, but it's far, far away from being raw sewage on that side. So that's what a step system is. It's a fully enclosed system, the water comes into the plant, it goes out, the water that's been cleaned has then dripped in the, in the system that side. There's any overflow, it goes back into the system and goes back through until it percolates through the ground, just like a regular septic system on that side. So that's what a step system is. It's really a very clean, we build these all across the state on this, on, across the state on this side, we do a whole bunch of Rutherford County, Williamson County that side. So these large subdivisions and stuff that are out in the county of Williamson County with the larger states and stuff like that, even down to seven or eight hundred home subdivisions in Rutherford County, that we have these step systems is what our sewer system is, because they're not near enough to a municipality's standpoint of having a sewer line to it, just like this property that we're talking about tonight on that side.
So have you done any with Edge before?
Edge is, is he there, then, Edge is more or less, they are the maintainer, so what, what will happen is the developer, Jack back here on that side, they will build the system, and then they deed that system over to Edge wastewater or another company, Adenus or something like that, that would take over the system. They become more or less the sewer system for that development and that tank system on that side. So they own it, they maintain it, so everything from the vaults in the front yards of every. So they own it, they maintain it. So everything from the vaults in the front yards of everybody's house to the pipes that are in the roadways, to the step system itself, they are the owners and managers and maintainers of that. So what they have on staff is they have individuals who are on call twenty-four seven. So if a meter on the house goes off in regards to the box in front of the house, if there's something that that pump shuts down for some reason, there's a clog, there's an indicator box on the side of each home that is telecommunicated back to their headquarters. They then dispatch a gentleman out there or lady on that side to come out and figure out what the issue is with that, with that system in front of the house. They're also on call in regards to any shutdowns or breakdowns on that side regards to this, the actual step system itself that's on that parcel on the, on the eastern side of the property on that side. So they're fully maintaining this across the board twenty-four seven on that side.
Who pays to maintain?
Each individual homeowner has a sewer bill, so their sewer bill, instead of going to Lake Columbia or to Mount Pleasant, from a sewer standpoint, it would be, they have a sewer bill that goes to Adenus, so every month they'll get a bill from Adenus based on the price and the cost and stuff like that.
So a truck will have to go to each individual house and pump the tanks, is what?
Yeah, periodically, it's just, you know, it's based on, they go out there and they should, and start checking the levels, because they'll have, there's a level major inside the pump itself, so they can tell where we're at in regards to disposables on that side. So, yes, they will come to the house, they have, they contract through another company that comes and pumps it, just like you would call a septic company, come to your septic system on your lot and the exact same thing that they would be doing, so.
Who's responsible if the company goes out of business?
The state.
How long are they, the state would be?
The state, the state regulates this.
Public utility, not a private utility.
Yeah, so state does regulate this. Um, we do have to submit as part of the process of these step systems. These plans do have to be submitted to TDEC. TDEC then reviews them from their engineering standpoint, maintenance standpoint, and then they have to, uh, uh, issue a, a state operating permit for each individual one of these. So we have hundreds of thousands of these state operating permits for these step systems that have been built all across the state. So that's where TDEC really is the one that governs this on, at the end of the day.
So how long have these systems been used?
We've been building, from my standpoint, SEC has been building these for almost twenty-five years.
What kind of problems do you run into?
There are minor leaks here and there, uh, so yes, there, you know, just like any septic system, there's going to be a leak here and there on that side. So that's why I said Adenus does have people on call that when there is a system issue, they come out and clean that up. But again, majority of the water that comes out of this system, once it goes to that UV building, is so much further below state standards in regards to water being discharged from a septic system. That's for the clarity and the cleanliness of the system on that side.
Does Columbia allow these systems?
Columbia, we haven't done one in Columbia that I know of on that side.
You know, do you use grinder pumps on these?
Yeah, so each individual house does not have a grinder pump, it's simply a pump for pushing the gray water. Your tank will still have two chamber systems in it, so your first chamber will hold your solids. Your water then spills over the rear wall into that system or the second chamber with the pump, just pumps the gray water out and runs down the system back to that.
Got any other questions on that?
Let's do that extension, add a maintenance.
And Mount Pleasant Fire Works is going to supply the electricity?
Mount Pleasant Fire Works has provided a well-served water.
Uh, sanitation's Mount Pleasant. Anybody got any other questions on that?
I did want to make a comment just because I heard a lot of people talk about the, the schools and I was concerned about that too. So I got the numbers from the schools and we're not really near overcrowded at this point in enrollment. We're at eighty-six percent at the high school, oh, I mean, the elementary school, seventy-one percent in the middle school and sixty-five percent in the high school. So we're not really overcrowded in schools, not that that, I just wanted everybody to know that, because I was interested in it too.
Along with annexation, you will have to send a letter to Murray County.
Yeah, I mean, we don't do the schools, Murray County does, but I, like I said, I was interested, so I wanted to share those numbers.
Uh, do, do we need to go ahead and do a motion on the plan of services?
So, we presented two resolutions, Kimmy Young, uh, packet that you received today. So you're voting on three things, but we felt the simplest way to do it was the, the recommendation on the annexation and the plan of services together. If you want to split those apart, you can, but the way the resolution is drafted, um, it explains why you're making that recommendation and it just accepts the plan of services. Recommend or doesn't recommend the plan of services, um, and the annexation generally.
And we probably ought to talk about density then, since it's part of the annexation.
The, the zoning will be a separate resolution.
Oh.
It's also.
So we can annex it and then not zone it?
You're making a recommendation.
Right, well, well, at the end of the day, all we're doing is making a recommendation.
We can talk about it first, right?
If you would like to talk about that one first.
Cause, well, I mean, I, yeah.
So the reason we separated them is because you have to do it simultaneously. So, uh, we felt like the annexation generally and the services are more of a package. They did request R three, an annexation for R three with a plan of services. And that's what the request is for, um, because you are an advisory committee to the commission. Can discuss the annexation generally, plan of services and zoning separately. I don't really care which one you do first, but it, if you were good with the annexation and you accept the plan of services and then you wanted to have a more deliberate discussion on the density, you could do that as well. The developer and applicants are here and they would take that into consideration when deciding how to go.
I guess I would like to hear from them on why they, they think R three is necessary.
Yeah.
How it meets the, uh, land plan.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, Rob will speak a little bit more of that. I just, uh, I wanted to.
State your name, please.
Jack Mayer, I apologize. I, I wanted to introduce myself. Uh, I appreciate getting to hear from everybody here. Uh, if you'll permit, I'd love to give a little background on our company.
Sure.
Um, my, uh, my father started building houses in nineteen eighty-five. He and my mom are standing out in the lobby. Um, so he started building houses in Franklin in nineteen eighty-five. We've been building houses in Spring Hill since nineteen ninety. Uh, we take a lot of pride in that. We've built a lot of houses here. Um, we've been fortunate to provide housing for a lot of people and that's, that's part of what we do. I, I appreciate, uh, some of the comments people had about developers, uh, and I'd like to think in every way, shape or form that that's not who we are. We stick, build every house, we stand behind it. We've got houses that we built twenty years ago that when they sell today, four, five, six owners later, they say it's a John Mayer Builders Home. Uh, and you don't get that from a lot of builders. We, we stand behind what we do, we're proud of what we do. We built everything in Spring Hill from a, you know, a ninety thousand dollar house in nineteen ninety, all the way up to a, a one point five million dollar house as the times changed. Our goal, no matter where we're building, whether it's Spring Hill, uh, Columbia here, is we want to build what best serves the community. And so that's been our mission all the way through Spring Hill. That'll be our mission here. We've been working on this project going on two years. We're excited about it. Uh, we, we hope to be a big part of this community. I, I, I understand people's trepidation, but I just, I wanted to say that we're happy to be here, we're excited to be here. And, um, this isn't, uh, we're not going away anytime soon. I live in Spring Hill. Uh, we're going to be here, uh, forever. So, uh, our name's attached to it. My father put his name on the company on purpose when he started. Uh, because it's not so-and-so builders, it's his name. Uh, if anything goes on that, uh, it reflects poorly on us and that's not what we do. So I just wanted a chance to say that and just thank you guys for hearing us out on this project.
Next question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to know why, why Mount Pleasant and why not Columbia or?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Our, uh, what we found, uh, as, uh, I, we built from ninety thousand, uh, one point five million in Spring Hill. Uh, it's taken a long time, the market's changed a lot and over those years. But, um, people demand a more attainable product. And so, um, land cost is, is a big thing as well as building costs that drive up the product cost. And so Spring Hill's become unaffordable for a lot of people. Uh, Columbia, that's, we're, we're working on a project, a couple of projects in Columbia right now too, but, uh, I, we love Mount Pleasant. Uh, we, we think it's a great place and obviously the people here do too, and then they, uh, disagree with us on our plan for it. But, um, we think there's a ton of potential here. And, um, so we're, we're excited about coming to this area and doing, over to provide, provide housing for this area, new quality house.
So why R three? That was the original question.
Yeah, sure.
The big question.
Yeah, that's the big question.
Absolutely. So, um, with, with R three zoning, one thing I want to point out and I totally understand is the concern is that we, we submitted a concept plan. I know you can't consider that plan. Then, uh, you've got to consider the maximum allowed product on R three. And I, I totally understand that. I would do the same thing in your, in your shoes. What I want to make sure, uh, we understand is based on the soils on this land, the plan that we've submitted is the maximum density that could ever be built here. Uh, it's the maximum number of units. There could never be anything else, anything greater than that built here. We did soil studies on the, on this whole property, that's all that can be accessed. Um, and obviously we're still a considerable amount, which has already been discussed away from sewer. And so we are going for R three. Uh, land costs, land costs are expensive. I mean, I, I won't pretend that it's not because we have to, we have to make a profit at the end of the day. But, um, we feel that it, it creates a great cohesive neighborhood. And most importantly is that there is nothing else. We plan to build these, but if we sold it the day after it got rezoned, nobody could ever do anything more dense than what we're doing because of the soil limitations on this property. I think that's the, the most important thing you could say.
Any other questions? Guess we have some findings of fact for the annexation and zoning amendment. Want to discuss those?
Yes, you have your, uh, zoning worksheet, um, that we use. Uh, I think they have it. But, uh, but we'll save it, save it for the beginning. Um, these are the four factors that you always consider when you're considering zoning. It's up to you to go through the worksheet. Like.
I could go through. The, the first question is the amendment is or is not in agreement with the land use plan for the area because?
Well, I'm, I mean, right here, it, this says a Murray County Comprehensive Plan calls for the area to maintain a rural character where agricultural uses are encouraged and enhanced.
And it's not also adjacent to downtown commercial activity?
Yeah, and then when you get into what the R three is, it says the R three district should be located adjacent to downtown commercial activity. Energize local businesses and sidewalks are very important. Developments in R three zones have a high degree of connectivity.
Any discussion on that? I mean, I don't, I don't think it meets that requirement.
It does not.
No, so it's not in agreement with the land use plan.
One, one thing I would like to throw out that I, I could be wrong on this, but if it is annexed into Not Pleasant, the Murray County Land Use Plan.
It doesn't, but it doesn't meet the Not Pleasant on per the location. It's not located there, downtown activity. Uh, there will, will not be an adverse effect upon adjoining property owners for cause.
Because you heard, there will be an adverse effect.
I'm thinking about some potential debate, yes.
To traffic, safety, uh, all the concerns everyone's spoken about tonight. I think it will have adverse effect on the property owners.
Well, the adjoining, I'm just, adjoining property owner is seven hundred houses, right?
But there's also people that live directly behind it, right here too, for that, so.
Yeah, you're right.
There's a neighborhood, there's a neighborhood right there.
Yeah, okay.
It's going to have a sewer system right behind it.
Where's the sewer system?
It's going on this side of the road. I think it was Mr. Harrison that spoke on that, it'd be in his backyard.
Yes.
And I don't think, okay, if the, if there is an adverse effect on adjoining property owners, such effect can, cannot be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. I guess we already said it'll be an adverse effect, so. But it cannot be justified by the overwhelming. Right, I mean. Uh, there is, is not a property owner, a small group of property owners that will benefit material from the change to the detriment of the general public.
I mean, I don't think we, I think that one's.
My point.
Yeah.
Uh, the following conditions affecting the area have, have not changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use and zoning map. I don't think the dishes have changed that enough at this time.
Well, they're about to.
They're about to, but they haven't and it still doesn't meet our definition of R three for downtown.
I mean, I guess that is the biggest concern to me, is that our R three.
Our, our own book says.
Does not describe what you're doing.
What you're doing.
It is, is that the only thing you'll consider is R three?
And I could be wrong, I'm, I'm thinking back a little bit. Uh, wasn't another property just recently zoned R three?
It possibly was, but that has no bearing on this, this project.
I, I totally understand. The only reason I bring it up is I don't, I don't think it met those same requirements.
It was already in the city limits also. We didn't have to annex it. So, but, so that project does not relate to the project at all.
Let me just, let me add to this as a point I was going to make in regards to R three and why we're asking for the R three. In regards to what we have from a density standpoint, in regards to the concept, I know it doesn't weigh any bearing on you, but in regards to the amount of soils that we have that will permit this number, this maximum number of lots that were shown on this concept plan. When you look at the density that's associated with this, it's two point one seven. So you're looking at typically more or less two units per acre. Chris, what's the R two zoning classification?
Fifteen thousand square feet minimum lot size.
So you're at twenty thousand, so typically speaking, we're at twenty thousand square foot lots when you look at the density calculation.
Your, your lots on the concept plan are sixty-eight hundred square feet, so just for reference.
Correct.
So it won't look like it's two ounces per acre, it'll look like there's five houses.
Right, but the, but the trade-off is that because you're not on a city sewer system, you're using the step system, you're pushing all the acreage to open space for the step system. So the density seems like it's going up as you're asking for the R three, or typically at, typically at a twenty thousand square foot lot size, density calculation wise, because they're setting aside the land and open space for amenity areas, the open space for the step system on that side. So that's the rationale for asking for the R three is to allow us to shrink those lots down, make a better development overall. And then the density still is in that twenty thousand square foot lot range.
Do we have any other questions? The resolutions. Corey, do you want to read the resolution? Do we want to do, what do we want to do here? Give them both?
I would prefer that you do the annexation and the plan of services first and then go to the other one. The Resolution twenty twenty-five PC oh four, that considering annexation and plan of services for the proposed annexation of property located at Trotwood Avenue and Old Zion Road by the City of Mount Pleasant. Whereas John Mayer Builders with the consent of the property owners have submitted an application for annexation to the City of Mount Pleasant for approximately a hundred and six acres lot located off Trotwood Avenue, Highway two forty-three and Old Zion Road identified as map parcel one eleven, map one eleven parcel twenty-nine, tax map one eleven parcel twenty-nine oh five, tax map one eleven parcel twenty-nine oh six, all recorded in the registered office of Murray. Whereas annexation adds property to the city and emits the city's official municipal zoning map, which is part of the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance. Title fourteen zoning land use control, chapter two of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code. Whereas upon receipt of an application for annexation or any zoning amendment, the planning commission shall conduct a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment and make a recommendation to the city commission pursuant to section four point seven of the zoning ordinance. And whereas Tennessee Code annotated six dash fifty-one one oh two mandates that a plan of services be adopted by the municipal governing body prior to the approval of any annexed resolution. And whereas Tennessee Code annotated six fifty-one one oh two, the four mandates that before the adoption of a plan of services, municipalities shall submit the plan of services to the local planning commission or study and to compile a written report within ninety days of submission. Whereas the planning commission shall hold a public hearing on the proposed plan of services. Whereas the area proposed for annexation lies within the urban growth boundary of the City of Mount Pleasant as legally required and as described in exhibit A. Whereas the proposed plan of services is attached hereto as exhibit B. Whereas the plan of services for, for the proposed annexation area has been reviewed and approved by the Mount Pleasant Public Works, Fire, Police, Parks and Recreation and Planning Department as detailed in exhibit D. Hang on, sorry.
I think the second page it says. Just talk about the public hearing? Yep.
Um, the planning commission held a public hearing on the annexation and the plan of services on July eighth, twenty twenty-five, at six in the Tom Harding Room of City Hall and studied and deliberated on the annexation of plan of services. Now to the important. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission as follows. Section one, the planning commission recommends or does not recommend annexation of approximately a hundred and six acres located, located off Trotwood Avenue and Old Zion Road and lists the map and parcels. Section two, pursuant to the provisions of T C A six fifty-one one oh two, the planning commission either recommends or does not recommend that the city commission adopt the following plan of services attached here to it incorporated. As exhibit B, and section three, that the minutes for the July eighth, twenty twenty-five, Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission meeting shall be submitted to the city commission at the planning commission's findings of fact and report, written report for the proposed plan of services. We went through the proposed plan of services earlier, that's exhibit B. Exhibit A is the meets and bounds description of the property. Um, and we would ask that you check the box on the resolution that we have.
Right, we need to entertain a motion on that. Take a motion on section one of the annexation of the hundred and six acres.
I think Dan wants to talk to more of this.
More discussion?
Can we discuss it a little bit? Um. I hear everybody, um, and you, I can, I mean, it's obvious, we all love here, I've only lived here five years, but I love this town. And I know you do too. Um, it goes deep. Um, change is coming, whether we want it or not. I guess my feeling is that I didn't know anything about them there. I heard people knew you guys, but I didn't, so I actually went out and drove through some of their, um, their developments. They're very impressive, even the smaller homes. Um, they've, they've done, they do iron work with street signs and all this, you know, it was really nice. I've committed to Nashville from here for the last five years and I've driven by all that crap, you know, the clapboard stuff that I know is gonna fall down when a tornado, that's aren't their homes. Um, and so, my, my feeling is, I'm not crazy about the R three. I think that it is, those roads are, it's rough. And, um, but I do think that when we have the opportunity to allow a good builder that has shown care for the environment and care for the communities that they're in versus, and maybe renegotiate them to an R two or something like that. But instead of somebody coming in here and zoning it R two and building a bunch of crappy houses, I would rather Mount Pleasant represent quality and care for the community versus, you know, just the zoning of it. Because you can have houses that are, have big lots, but, and I found one by accident off of, what am I saying, Burton Road or something. Um, yeah, and they're, they're sitting on big old lots and they look terrible and they're not a good representation of what we want here in Mount Pleasant. So my feeling would be to annex it, approve the plan of services and then defer the zoning till we can have a little bit more discussion. And know that we're getting somebody that would care for our town.
And I want to add on to that because, I mean, I've served with this fellow on the Murray Alliance Board and I know, I'm a realtor, so I, I know this company has been generous, involved in the community, taking care of the community, a good company. That, I just wanted to throw that out there to have, to you, because I know they're good builders, but I also know they're good people.
I would like to add, I've, I've got no problem with annexing, I do have a problem with R three. That's, I, I don't like that.
I agree, it's, it's a huge hang up.
Well, it sounds like the thing, is there any, I mean, can, can you live with an R two? I mean, is, I know you have to make money, I mean, I know that's, you know, i- can you live with an R two?
We'd have to, we'd have, we haven't drawn a plan like that. We'd have to redraw a plan and see what that looks like.
That would also reduce the sewer capacity too, if they went to an R two, there wouldn't be as much of a leak going, so it, it'd help a couple of different ways.
The only, the challenge with it, and we'll, we'll absolutely explore it, the challenge with it is the land cost. Whether we get a thousand houses here or twenty-five, the land cost is the same. And so, uh, the more expensive the lot is, the more expensive the home is. And so, um, that, that's, that's one of the challenges with that.
What, what did you think your price point would be on these homes anyway?
To be honest with you, well, like I said, we built every price point, our, our, our goal.
What, what was your goal for this neighborhood?
We don't have one yet, to be honest with you.
So you have no idea what those houses are gonna cost, but yet it has to be R three, that density because of why?
I understand.
You gotta have all that somewhere.
I, I understand your question. I, I, what I don't want to do is throw out a number and be wrong. What I think these houses will be is three fifty to five fifty, something like that, if I had to throw out a range. Uh, our goal is gonna be to build the absolute highest quality house we can and make it attainable for as many people as possible. That's our goal. Um, again, the zoning we get, the infrastructure required, all that dictates into cost. And so, uh, again, our goal is to build a quality product, it's gonna be here a long time from now. The plan that we put forth is what we feel allows us to deliver the highest quality product. And that's, that's always gonna be our goal.
Any more discussion, questions?
If we do an annexation, do we, at that same time, have to do as in?
Annexation, you have to simultaneously?
You have to do both.
Okay, uh, so, you couldn't do one and defer the other or anything like that?
If we deferred the whole thing, see if I can get different classifications. They have to reapply for permits and all that?
If you defer, they do not have to reapply. If they, if you were to recommend R two and they were to go back to the drawing board and say that's something we'd like to consider, they would have to amend their application. We've seen that done before, even once it's been considered by the commission.
You do have to provide a report to the city commission within ninety days and we're at around thirty days, I guess. So, that, that's the only timeline that you're, you're operating under currently. If the applicant decided to defer for their own benefit, then that clock stops and they can study it if they want to or reconsider a different zoning. Depends on who takes that deferral action.
Any other questions, sir?
You're good on this.
Entertain a motion on the, uh, annexation, section one, a hundred and six acres located off Trotwood Avenue?
This is just the annexation.
It's just the annexation, we're gonna go, it's, we got two on this one and then we got the, uh, zoning on the other somewhere.
Make a motion to approve the annexation.
I'll second that.
Still roll call, please?
Paulus? Mr. Urban? Mr. Hunter?
No.
It's Graham?
All right, that passes. Recommend that they annex. Uh, section two, uh, adoption of the plan of services, take a motion on that.
I make the motion we recommend the plan of services.
Second.
We'll do a roll call on that too.
Paulus?
No.
Urban, yes. Hunter?
No.
It's Graham?
Yes.
It's Johnson?
Yes.
Passes.
Just, just for clarity, they all voted on the two section items, are you going to vote on the resolution as a whole with those boxes checked or do you want to?
Yeah, I'd just sign it, I mean, if we check the two boxes, right? I mean, that's each. Yeah, I make sure we check.
Vote on the resolution as a whole with those two boxes checked.
Okay, so the resolution as a whole recommends that we annex the property and adopt the plan of services. We'll take a motion on that to approve the entire resolution.
They're moved.
All right, we'll do a roll call again.
Paulus?
No.
Urban?
Yes.
Hunter?
No.
Graham?
Yes.
It's Johnson?
Yes.
All right, that passes. All right, uh, the resolution twenty twenty-five P C dash zero five.
Considering R three high density residential zoning for the proposed annexation of property located at Trotwood Avenue and Old Zion Road by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee. Whereas John Mayer builders with the consent of the property owners have submitted an application for annexation to the city of Mount Pleasant of approximately a hundred and six homes located off Trotwood Avenue and Old Zion Road identified as same map and parcel. Whereas zoning for annex territory shall be established concurrently with annexation. Whereas John Mayer builders requested the establishment of R three high density residential zoning for the property being considered for annexation. Whereas upon receipt of an application for zoning, the planning commission shall conduct a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment and make a recommendation to the city commission pursuant to section four point seven of the zoning ordinance. Whereas the planning commission held a public hearing on the establishment of R three high density residential zoning for the approximately a hundred and six acres located off Trotwood Avenue and Old Zion Road, being proposed for annexation on July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Six in the Tom Harding Room of City Hall. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission as follows. Planning commission either recommends or does not recommend that if annexed, the city commission establish R three high density residential for the zoning of the approximately a hundred and six acres that we've just got tonight. In section two, pursuant to the zoning ordinance, section four point seven C one, the planning commission finds the, adopt the findings stated in the zoning worksheet, exhibit A as the basis for the recommendation. The zoning worksheet is the document that you went through earlier and included your comment, one service grant, that's one.
Well, that's the one we went through where it is not in agreement with the land use and there will be an adverse effect upon adjoining properties if we vote R three. So.
So, is it up or down on that or?
You're making a recommendation.
Recommendation against.
Yeah, it's up or down. Um, they can come back and try to change their application for a different zoning, thanks Hunter. Uh, or you can defer it to give them an opportunity. Um, but it, you do need a recommendation of some to the thing.
I'll entertain a motion if there's no more discussion on, uh, assigning R three high density zoning to this.
Well, I make the motion that due to the fact that, um, it, it's not in agreement with the land use plan, um, and it, it does have an adverse effect, um, that we do not recommend R three.
Done appropriately, you tell me? Yeah, that's basically what is checking the box on this resolution.
It says she's, she made a motion to not approve R three zone.
I second that.
Yeah.
Still roll call, please?
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Hunter?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
It's Johnson?
Yes.
Well, that failed. All right?
Yeah, clarity, is that actually a vote on resolution?
Right, yeah, to set center recommendation of not approval of R three to let this on works. Uh, here, I gotta find my agenda again. Uh. General comments, citizens' already speak, board of staff comments, I would like to say, Chris, this time was one of the most complete packets we've had in a while, all the work.
Absolutely, amazing, yes.
We appreciate everybody coming out and giving us input on it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And, uh, did you have anything else, Cory, or anybody?
Make a motion to adjourn before we get to something?